Good morning. I want to call to order the meeting of the May 29th Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If y'all will stand with us, please. Commissioner Vincent Windrow will lead our prayer and our pledge.
Let us pray. Not unto ourselves, but unto you, God, that we give thanks and praise and glory. We give you thanks for this day and all the possibilities that reside in this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come and to serve and to be served by this commission. We give you thanks and praise, Lord, for the business that has been and will be brought before this board. As relates to the business at hand, take lead of our minds that we will continue to be faithful, that we continue to be trustworthy, that we will continue to be fair to all the citizens of this county. We give you thanks and praise for our soldiers and those who are serving in the military here and abroad. We give you thanks and praise for it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And be seated. Call the real gal.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Richie Bowlen.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan. Mike Kush.
Present.
Craig Lynch.
Present.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught. Vincent Windrow.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Need to approve the minutes of the April 23rd meetings. Call on Vice Chair Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman and I have read those minutes and I make a motion that we do approve those.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Items deferred?
No, sir.
Item number six, bond plat extensions. We'll take both of these at the same time if that's okay.
Yes, sir. The reason for both of these, of course, is the economic situation. I do want to make a comment on Martha's Haven. The developer out there has requested that we allow her to give us a check for the bond to keep until as such time as the work is done and then we can, we'll give it back to her. This is a little different than what we normally do. We have done this before, but her reasoning is she pays, you know, three hundred a month or whatever it is for that bond. We would take the money, turn it over to finance, they keep it in a non-interest bearing account at the time its deeds, work is done and money is returned to the lady. I just wanted to make the comment, the other one we did was only for a couple thousand dollars. This one's quite a bit more than that, so.
Let's take them separate. Item number A is Martha's Haven at Barfield, letter of extension for one year. That's the one you were just talking about.
Yeah, and also if we take the cash, unless you just want it extended a year after year, we'll keep the cash until the work's done, so it may be more than a year. That's my only comment.
You actually get the money, you're not just getting a check?
Well, we get the check and it's cashed and the money's put into our.
Yeah.
We don't keep the check, it's cashed.
How much is the money?
This one, I think, is around forty-five thousand dollars. The roads are in really good shape out there, they just need to top it and it's a small subdivision, but, you know, we just need to bond it. I have no problem doing this, but I told her I would make you aware, this is a little different than our normal procedure, so you be aware of it.
And that would be equal to the amount of the bond?
Yes.
Any problem with that?
Do we want to get, do we want to get into that? If we open up one, we will get another one next month, next year?
There is a possibility, and one reason is because we recently had a subdivision, went to get a bond, and the bank wanted them to put up the amount of cash equal to the bond so they could get the bond. It was, and then they had to pay for the bond. So it's kind of a, there's a possibility that we would get into escrow and then, again, talking to lease over and finance, it's not a problem, we just turn it over to them and they keep it in a separate account.
Who keeps the interest on that?
There is no interest bearing on that. I talked to, well, this lady wanted to know, and, you know, what are we getting in interest these days? Point two percent, point four, but Lisa said there's non-interest bearing. She just keeps it.
If the ultimate goal is just to have that value covered and it's covered by cash or bond, then I'm comfortable in making a motion that we approve that.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Thank you.
Travis Estate is a letter of credit extension for a year and it's, it's our normal procedure for things.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Item seven, submitted for final plat approval. A Colonial State's Section 12, Phase 1F, nine lots on 3.37 acres, zoned R-15, located along Dream Accord, B.C., developers applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this piece of property is along Dream Accord. It's another phase of the Colonial State subdivision. We've considered, the planning commission's considered several phases of this particular section over the last year or so, and it's just a continuation of that. As you stated, it is nine lots for the development. Security for drainage and roads will need to be provided to staff prior to the plat being recorded, but besides this issue, the plat does appear to be in good order. And the applicant's design engineer is present. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Discussion?
Meets all requirements?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Item B, Gravy Property Manor, Final Plat, three lots on 3.09 acres, zoned R-15, located along Veterans Parkway, Scott Gravy, applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along the east side of Veterans Parkway to the north of Franklin Road, Highway 96. The applicant's proposing to split the property into three separate parcels. There have been no waivers requested part of this development, and the plat does appear to be in good order. That being said, the applicant will need to coordinate with the county highway department as far as curb cuts for driveway locations. As you recall, this is on the section of Veterans Parkway that was, that was improved to five lanes, curb and gutter section through that area, I believe. So, other than that, again, it appears to be in good order.
Thank you, Doug.
Doug, isn't it unusual to have subdivision lots directly off a major road like this? Or is it just because the timing of the road versus the plat?
Well, yeah, and the lots, even in their current configuration, were already there. You know, it was a two-lane road before it was widened. I mean, typically you don't see something like that, just, just a lot, but, I mean, they're, they're not just, you're an average, you know, fifteen thousand square foot lots, they're all, except for the Lot 3, they're all almost an acre. Lot 1 is just about an acre, Lot 2's a little over, so it's, I mean, I wouldn't say it's unheard of at the same time.
What's it about traffic flow on a road when it reaches its potential and now you're trying to pull in and out of, and there's, so there's no other access, there's no other way to access those lots?
No, not, not really. This is pretty much, if you, if you look at the map in your general materials, this property's on the east side surrounded by Murfreesboro City, one of their subdivisions right to the east. I think it's, I think it's part of the cloister, if I remember right, but the, yeah, I mean, unfortunate, yeah, this is the only way really they could access the road would be direct onto Veterans.
Any other questions or discussion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item number eight, submitted for site plan approval, Buddhist temple, total new construction of approximately forty-one hundred and fifty square feet on seventeen point nine-nine acres, zoned R-15, located at forty-eight eighty Barfield Crescent Road. Mr. Vin Prada Mo Monken, applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this piece of property is located along Barfield Crescent Road. It's actually on the north side, right to the east of the intersection with Armstrong Valley and Midland Road. The original plan that we considered was about forty-five, forty-one hundred and fifty square feet, as you said. The revised plan that you have before you, the building's actually a lot less than that, it's about eighteen hundred square foot is what we're looking at. The applicants are proposing to construct a new building for meditation. The existing house would remain on the property, would be continued to be used by the monks for living purposes. The existing gravel drive that's on the property would be paved as well as parking area instead of gravel parking. After researching the water situation in this area, it turns out that the line can support a fire hydrant, so one will be provided as part of this development. We had some outstanding issue with the landscape plan, but just kind of going over it prior to the meeting, it looks like they've pretty much gotten that taken care of. So, everything appears to be in good order with it. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Discussion? You mentioned new construction. They're not relocating from any places.
No, sir, this is brand new.
Okay.
So, the existing house is currently for housing?
Yes, sir.
And the new proposed building, really the only thing we're looking at is the proposed building and the parking lot expansion.
That's correct.
Right. And just, just a question for clarification in the future. The new zoning ordinance has different categories based on population, it's not the right word, but number, number of.
Occupancy.
Yeah, occupancy, right. Do you know what the occupancy currently of this potential?
I'm not sure exactly what the occupant load is on this. I don't know if Mr. Reed had any of that information about the total occupant load of the new area.
Less than one fifty, you think? People?
Oh, yes. There's approximately fifty people.
Okay, so it would be, it would qualify as a small?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And, and that being said, in the new zoning regulations, this is a perfect locate, it's acceptable location for, for a small worship facility?
It would be, if, if it's zoned RM, and I don't have the zoning map right in front of me, the proposed zoning map, but if it were zoned RM, which is pretty much R-15, then to answer your question, yes, this would be permitted by rights still because of the size.
Okay. Does staff have any comments or?
As far as we're concerned, I think they've addressed the concerns that we had. I know that there was some discussion about drainage and engineering, I'll let Mr. Corbett handle that, but I think it was pretty minor, as I recall.
Yeah, because the size of the lot you have, and the fact it's, it's less than ten thousand square feet, they don't have to meet the stormwater, the stormwater requirements, it meets our requirements on drainage.
Okay. Do they, do they own this entire tract?
As far as I know, they do.
All right. And, and last question, again, this is mainly for future education for everybody. This building is, I've been told is, looks like, more like a conventional brick and mortar building. If this were a true Buddhist temple like we see in other cities with ornate decorations, ornate architecture, tall spires, we as a body really have no control over the architectural content. Is that correct?
Based on the way the regulations are proposed at this time, you are correct. We don't really have any design guidelines within the, either our existing or even our draft zoning resolution.
Okay.
Other than height?
Height, right, but there are certain exceptions as far as steeples and those kind of things, but, but yes, height is one that is regulated.
Doug, in their original landscaping proposal, did it have anything to do with their meditative practices?
I don't think so. I think it just had to do with the amount that was being brought for screening around the, the boundaries of the property. That, that was really, it had, I don't think it was anything to do with that.
Are there exemptions for that?
No, no, so there's no exemptions as far as that's concerned. Now, of course, we do, the planning commission does have the ability to approve what's called an alternative landscape plan if we ever ran into something like that, but it didn't have anything to do with that, so.
Cool. Has the office received any calls or questions?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm looking at Ms. Embley and Ms. Johnson, neither one of us have recalled seeing, and I know that this has gotten some, some press, both in the Daily News Journal as well as some of the Nashville media, but as far as I know, we haven't received any phone calls
Questions, ready for a motion?
I would make a motion that based on the fact that it meets all of our requirements, motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries. Item B, Buddhist temple, total new construction, the addition of pavilions of approximately ten thousand five hundred square feet, seven point nine acres, zoned R-15, located at fifty-two sixteen Old Nashville Highway, Pat Budharam, applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located on Old Nashville Highway, it's on the east side near the overpass at State Route 840. Two pavilions have been constructed on the property. When codes and planning staff were made aware of the situation, we met with the applicants, applicants and explained the process to them for the new buildings. You'll see this is part of the existing Buddhist temple. You'll see toward the, I guess that's the far left of the site plan on your tables, you'll see the two pavilions located in the back there. The site plan does come as a result of that meeting. It's our understanding that pavilions are used during religious festivals that are held on the property. Because of the type of structures there are, additional parking is not required. Variance was granted for the landscape requirements back in 2003. While we're comfortable with the use of the property, there were a few issues that had to be addressed based on our staff comments. I would say there were more housekeeping in nature. With that, everything appears to be in good order with it. Mr. Corbett, I'll turn it over to you for any drainage issues.
There are no additional drainage issues that are not taken care of. There's some drainage issues from the site that results from some concrete paving, but our public works crew is currently meeting with the landowners next door to do a project that'll take care of the, some of the off-site stuff. The drainage problems are not as a result of this map, it's as a result of something that happened earlier, so.
Thank you. Open for discussion.
What exactly do the pavilions look like, or?
I think they're just kind of open air pavilions, and I'll be honest, I have to round the property and look.
Just a general covered.
Right, they're covered. But they're not, you know, they don't have walls on all sides or anything like that.
Oh, that's what I was just wondering, are they enclosed or just open air?
I think they're, they're just open.
Is, is, am I understanding this to be, everything's already done, we're just cleaning this up?
Yes, sir.
Everything is.
Yeah, they were, yes, they were, they constructed those without any permits or anything, and then after we found out what was going on, we let them know, they came up and met with us, and this is just kind of cleaning it up. Yes, sir.
Have we received any phone calls on these?
Not that I'm aware of. I will say that one of the comments I've noticed that they haven't addressed was taking the proposed off the pavilion since they're already there, so if you want to make any appro, if you do make approvals, make it subject to staff comments just to make sure we take care of that before we do anything else with it, but that's fairly minor, so.
You're talking about the two shaded?
In the back, right, the two shaded ones in the back, you see their label proposed, they should be, we, one of our, what's that?
Those are already in.
Those are, yeah, that's the subject of why this came to us to begin with, right?
Has codes, are we okay with codes on this?
Yeah, codes has been made aware, and, you know, they, they have been working with us throughout this, this process, so everything appears to be fine.
So, to our knowledge, there's no code violation?
I don't think there's any codes.
Electrical's good, everything else is good?
Actually, I don't even know if there's even electrical out there, but as far as, they're, they're working with them and understand what's going on, so.
Okay. Would that perhaps be part of our approval that, that code, it's met codes?
I think, I mean, I don't think it'll hurt anything. I mean, that's going to have to be done regardless of whether or not it's approved here and made a condition or not. I mean, if you just approve it, subject to staff comments, they're still going to have to meet whatever codes requirements there are, so I don't think that's.
I guess I'm just a little concerned that if somebody's absent minded enough to go ahead and build when they don't have a permit, it makes me wonder what else they're putting in the ground that nobody knows about.
I mean, if.
From a utility standpoint.
And if you want to make the approval subject to that, again, I don't think there's any problem with that, but I just want you to understand that that'll be done regardless if it is or not, so.
All right, thank you.
Doug, I have one more question. You've got the, it's outlined here for the minimum setback lines, but obviously these pavilions are pretty close to the property lines. If they had come in advance, would they have to have been inside that building envelope or is pavilion allowed outside?
No, these are access, I'm sorry, these are accessory structures, so as such, they don't have to meet the building setbacks, they're, they're a little different for that, so they can be closer to the property line than what principal structures are allowed.
In your discussion, was there any talk about further expansion or further building?
Not that I can recall. I mean, Mr. Corbett made a, kind of alluded to a little earlier about some of the issues that, with the drainage. I think there was some, some paving that was done out there with, without, and that's been a few years, as I understand it.
That's where I got here.
Now, as part of our staff comments, we did put on there any future paving, things like that. Please make sure you come up to staff prior to, you know, beginning any of those activities so we can make sure that, you know, that kind of a situation doesn't happen again. But as far as any specific discussions on future plans, that, that, nothing was brought up at that time.
How was the traffic flow with this? I mean, when this thing is full of people, is it?
Well, they've got two.
Out there?
Yeah, I mean, they've got two access points and they have a good amount of parking out there, and as you see, the property's pretty deep, so I don't think internal circulation's really an issue, and there's, especially in the front, there's quite a bit of pavement, so as far as that goes, I mean, I don't think that traffic circulation is really going to affect any, in fact, the festivals that they have, I think they, I mean, this is just to continue on with what they already do to help with that. I don't think this is something new that they're starting, as I understand it.
There's a couple of times a year that traffic is bad on Old Nashville Highway right there, but it's only a couple of times a year, and they generally have a sheriff or a sheriff's representative out there to kind of, to guide the traffic. So, that's, that's my route.
Okay.
Old Nashville Highway, so, but no, it's, it's not a big hindrance.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one last question. When somebody does this, when they ask for forgiveness instead of permission, I mean, are there fines, are there consequences to doing this?
Typically, what ends up happening in those situations is the permit fees are doubled. Now, that's a call our codes department makes as far as that goes. Now, we still charge our normal fees that we, we usually do, but that, my understanding is from the codes department, they, they have the ability to issue double charge for fees.
Yeah, on the one hand, I want to penalize somebody for not knowing, but on the other hand, I don't want to reward somebody for.
Right, right.
You know, for going around the system, so.
Yeah, and I don't think that, I mean, just, and I don't, I really think that there may have just been a little misunderstanding as to what the procedure was, but once, once we alerted them to what was going on, this plan was, was pretty timely to come in, so they, they got on it pretty quick.
They probably don't, are not able to withstand that ninety mile an hour wind, though.
Well, again, that's, that'd be something they'll have to work through our codes department on.
It's a whole lot cheaper to build a cheap one and pay double the fines than it is to do a ninety mile an hour architectural run during.
How can you tell if I'm looking at this that it couldn't stand there? How can you tell if I'm looking at this that it wouldn't stand there?
Would you, would you include the codes, just for me?
Well, yeah.
Oh, no, go ahead, no, I don't do, just go ahead.
The reason I'm saying no, we don't, the codes will handle that. We don't look at codes on site plan.
Then I withdraw my.
I think the county will do.
And again, that'll have to be regardless, if it's on there or not, it'll have to be done, so.
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? Any? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries. Thank you. Staff reports, item number nine.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, staff doesn't have anything to report. Mr. Corbett, Mr. Corbett's not, or shaking his head that he doesn't have anything either. So, at this point, if you guys just want to take a quick five-minute break, let's clean the plans off, and we'll go ahead and get into our work session.
Anything else to come before this commission today?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, so we're adjourned and five minutes will reconvene for our work session. Thank you. At this time, we'll reconvene for our work session and I'll basically turn it over to staff, and here we go.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is just a continuation of the work sessions that we've been having for the new zoning ordinance. After our last meeting, which was, I guess, two weeks ago from yesterday, there were still a couple of issues that we're in discussions on, and those being namely the distances for rock quarries from adjacent properties as far as quarrying activities are concerned, as well as discussions on open space for planned developments. We do have a couple of handouts on your table regarding both of those issues, the PUDs and the rock quarry distances. As far as order, how you guys want to take these, it's up to you. Would you rather do the rock quarry information first, or would you rather do the PUD discussion? I'll kind of leave it up to you as how you want to go forward with that.
Just go with rock quarry first.
Okay. Well, the first thing, and I've got a couple of, we didn't have, you'll recall at the last meeting, we had some handouts of some maps kind of showing, we'd done a report on quarry regulations, and we had gotten some assistance from the APA, American Planning Association, as far as quarry regulations from other parts of the country, three of which were in Tennessee, Knox County, Williamson County, and Anderson, I believe, Anderson County was the third one. But the, essentially, we, there was quite a bit of discussion as far as our current regulations, what we're proposing in the draft ordinance and some possible changes to that. This is what is proposed for Rutherford County as far as rock quarries are concerned now. Again, this is, this is an actual piece of property in Rutherford County. The, the zoning and everything around it's been changed just to, for, for information purposes and as well as just for the scenario, but this is about a six hundred and twenty acre tract of land, based on our regulations now with fifteen hundred feet from all properties and then one mile from all schools. Now, this map doesn't necessarily show the schools issue in there because of the constraints with that, but you'll see that about six hundred and twenty acres yielded about fifty-seven and a half acres of actual quarryable area. Now, there was some discussion about, so basically, this means we could use ten percent of the property, which I would caution the planning commission on, making that, just that quick assumption. A lot of it depends on the, of course, the surrounding zoning and some scenarios, as well as the shape of the property is really the big one. Just this one happened to be about ten percent. I don't think all of them would, would equal that, but I think the point being that it takes an awful large piece of property in order to have any kind of a quarryable area.
This also assumes that the rock on this piece of property is in the exact middle of that piece of property.
Right.
Which may or may not happen here.
Thank you. So, what we have done, and based on some of the discussions we had, there was some discussion the other day at the planning commission regarding the fifteen hundred foot and possibly where that came from. We did look through the state regulations and talk with our consultant. As far as either one of us can tell, that fifteen hundred foot is not the result of any kind of a state regulation. Honestly, I think it was just when they were doing the regulation, that was the number they came up with. I don't know, I can't really speak as to what the, the reasoning was behind that, but it does not appear to have come from any kind of a state regulation, at least one that's in effect at this point. So, there was also some discussion about the distance from schools, and this next map here kind of shows a one-mile radius from the different schools in Rutherford County. So, there, there is still quite a bit of area out there even with that, but you can see that it's fairly well scattered throughout the county as far as where the school locations are. Now, these are just the public schools, as I understand it. There may be a couple of private schools in the county which would still count for that regulation, however, are not shown on this particular map. Now, assuming there were some schools within our test parcel that we used, and you can and you can kinda see on, on the map here, that you've kinda got, these are just possible, these aren't real schools here, but these are, if there were schools in the area, you can see these are one-mile radii from both of those school sites. Most of that would cut into what's already being set aside for setbacks, but you can see that the usable area did go down slightly as a result of that. And again, a lot of that depends on the location of the school in relation to the, the property. So, but that just gives you an idea of what you would get in that kind of a situation.
Okay, Doug, that's a good demonstration because what you're showing there is that it can't be not within one mile of the property line, but within of the actual quarrying activity, right?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I had it in my head that it was the outer boundary, but you're saying the actual activity.
Mm-hmm, right. Now, and, and the way it's currently written in our code, I'm trying to remember now, but, in our current ordinance right now, that we're currently under, it just says, "Resource production and extraction type operations should not be located closer than one mile to any school site." So you could argue that that would be the whole property. Now, the current, the way we have it in our draft has to do with actual, the quarry wall, storage area, those kind of things. So it is, it's a little bit, yeah, it's a little more specific than what we currently have.
Who benefits most from, from, from this particular scenario in terms of where the radius is? So if it was on the outside of the boundary, if, if the actual, um, uh, mark, the, the actual, uh, landmark, the actual boundary, if it was then that way instead of this way, would the quarry benefit more, or would the residents and/or school and/or county itself benefit more?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, y'all have to forgive me, I'm not sure.
If I live, quarry benefit more? If I live a mile from the usable?
The green, the green area?
Yes. It's different than if I live a mile from the actual
Right.
Boundary.
The gray area. If this arc was counted from here?
Right.
Then this, and it couldn't be within a mile of the school, then, uh, the, the people surrounding, in other words, the, the quarry would probably loo, would lose more versus where it is there. In other words, if your mile is here,
Right.
You'd have to move your whole parcel down to here for, to be utilized.
And I think that's an important distinction to make, too, that for the purposes of this map, we just did it mile from the point. You know, if it's a mile from the property line, and I don't know, we may have to make sure that that's specifically mentioned, a mile from what exactly the point or the property line. If it's a mile from the property line, as Mr. Corbett's saying, you actually start, you don't measure the mile from this point coming out, you'd measure it from right here coming out.
And there is a difference.
There, yeah, there's a, in this situation, there'd be a huge difference.
In all situations, it would be a huge difference.
Yeah, pretty much, I, I think so, because of the just the size of the property, especially a school, you know, especially the kind of size of schools that Rutherford County builds are typically on larger parcels and are very large schools, because they, they have to be. And of course, they have to support parking and all those other things, so more land's required.
And you'd really almost have to count it from the property line instead of the building structure, because the building structure can change. They can add on to schools and renovate and, and now, it's not, you know, now it's, now the distance has changed.
Right, right. Of course, now, if there were a situation where there was an existing quarry and then a school, and using your situation, they, they add it on and all of a sudden, they're now within a mile or whatever it was, as they weren't before, you know, there's grandfathering issues there, but, uh, but, I mean, that's point well taken.
And maybe you could do it from the building envelope? 'Cause even a school's gonna have a building envelope.
Well, there's a couple of things. We, the, the rock quarry on Burtonob, this new school they built, is within a mile of that quarry, but that quarry is already existing, so the quarry's grandfathered. Now, for a while in my position, I was, um, over the landfill. We were going to try to build a burn area out there, and we had one located with state's approval. We had a homeowner put a house in on the other side of the river. You cannot, it turns out by state regs, you cannot have a burn area within a mile of a resident. And so when the inspector came out, let's say it was right there, and found this house right here, which, which was on the other side of the river, and it was under construction, it wasn't completed. I got sighted at the landfill 'cause my burn area was within a mile of that house. I then had to find another site on property. Fortunately, we had enough room that I could move the site over here, and I'm just doing generic. But in that case, the grandfathering did not apply to what was existing because of new construction. I had to change the location. My point is, if you were somehow to say, well, a, a new school's built here, you can't do this, even though it's already approved, because within a mile, then you, you create a real, uh, challenge for the people doing the, the work.
What about the reverse? Say an existing quarry was there and they built, wanted to build a school three-quarters a mile from the, from the quarry. Could they do that?
Well, that's what happened. Uh, we're on, uh, Stewart Springs, one of the new, the new schools is, is within that mile of the Rock Springs. They'll, nobody checked, I might, I don't think anybody checked that particular requirement at the time they built the school, they just went ahead and built it.
Then to take that scenario a little bit further, and that existing quarry wanted to expand and had the room to expand, uh, could they do that? It was, it's their property, could they do that?
Well, then you run into a new situation where you got an expansion. Expansion then could come under the, the requirement, it can't be near to a school, which would, which would delete the expansion, even though it's within their property and within their permit.
So you're, you're talking about the old chicken and egg thing. If, if the, if the school says, well, yeah, we like this site and we understand it's only three-quarters of a mile, we're gonna go ahead and build a school. I would think, I mean, if I was this, if I was a quarry operation, I would say, well, you put that in writing that you're gonna hold me harmless because you're encroaching on the one mile. But then on the flip side, if the school can do it, why couldn't the quarry do it?
I'm, I'm just, there's some, you saw the circles up there a minute ago, that could really happen sometime in the future. You know, we're talking about rock quarries, and we hadn't approved one in, in, in my tenure. Okay, but, uh, it could happen sometime in the future, or there could be some application sometime in the future. And there are a bunch of circles up there, and Rhonda, there's gonna be probably more circles in the very near future, so, uh, it, it, it could really happen. There is a lot of open space left out there, but maybe some of that open space doesn't have the rock.
Doug, I think where you're headed is that we're eliminating the one mile buffer, right?
Right, and yeah, we'll, we'll discuss as, as we continue on what our, what our proposal is. Uh, there was also some discussion about Williamson County's regulations. Of course, the report that we gave you was based on their existing, or I'm sorry, their proposed regulations, which were approved, uh, I believe, within the last month or so, and will take effect at the beginning of next year. But we looked at their existing regulations.
I've got a meeting with T-Dot, I'm gonna, I'll be back.
But, uh, in the report that we had, Williamson County's, which is pretty much formed the basis of what we're proposing, but essentially what their, uh, requirements are is all activities and structures shall be a minimum two hundred feet from all property lines and a thousand feet from all residentially zoned property, except for parking, fencing, and offices. Their existing regulations, as they're, as they exist today, are actually a lot less than that. Uh, no excavation, quarry wall or storage area shall be located within fifty feet of any lot line, one hundred twenty-five feet from any street right-of-way, nor within two hundred feet of any residential property line. So you see, they went, kind of, they went up fairly drastically compared to what they currently have. Uh, so just, uh, just wanted to report on that. But, uh, moving on to the proposal, and this is kinda what we're proposing at this point, and there should be a piece of paper on your desk, looks like this, has, uh, the current draft regulations and then the proposed. What we're proposing for setbacks, and again, this, you, if you look at this, it looks pretty similar to Williamson County's map, which, uh, this is, this is actually Williamson County. It's almost exactly the, exactly the same here, but I just do, okay. Okay. But basically, what we're proposing is just kind of a amendment to the way that we have this worded currently. No excavation, quarry wall or storage area shall be located within one thousand feet of any community assembly activity, which would include churches and anything like that. Community education activity, which would be your schools, either public or private, or residentially zoned property, including any residential portions of approved planned developments, and two hundred feet from any other property lines, which would be your office or commercial or other industrial zones. All structures, with the exception of parking, fencing, and offices, which the house will have to at least be two hundred feet from any property line. Uh, so that would, so if somebody had, if they had like a small office building where they did administrative functions, those kind of things, those could just meet the regular setbacks for the district. Whereas all your other quarrying type structures, your belts, conveyors, crushers, what have you, would have to be at least two hundred feet from any property line. Also, what we're proposing is to amend Appendix B, which is the land use chart, the land use activity table, which, and we discussed this a little bit at the last meeting, to allow mining, drilling, and quarrying activities as special exceptions in the agricultural residential zone in addition to the heavy industrial zone. The way we currently have it in the draft, it's just allowed by special exception in the heavy industrial. But you'll recall at our last meeting, we discussed that at some length, as far as if somebody gets a piece of property rezoned for heavy industrial and then has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the conditional, or the special exception. If it's denied, they still have a heavy industrial zoned piece of property that whatever is allowed by right in the heavy industrial, they can do. Uh, we felt it might not be a bad idea to say, okay, allow them in the agricultural zone. That way, if somebody wants to come in to do a quarry, we could propose that they be zoned agricultural. They get their zoning, they still have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the special exception. If they don't get it, then you just, you're left with agricultural land and whatever's the uses are permitted there, as opposed to the heavy industrial zone. So we thought that was a good, uh, we thought that that was a good change to the ordinance, so we proposed that as well. So you'll notice we've taken, and this kinda goes back to Ms. Allen, what you were saying earlier, we've taken the, the schools from one mile and just put them in the same one thousand feet with residentially zoned property, churches, and all, and all those kind of things.
On the community education activity, does that include daycares?
I don't think so.
And do we have a definition for that? Do we have a definition for community education?
Yes, it includes the activities of an educational nature, and this is out of, directly out of Chapter Two, typically performed by pri, public or private schools. Uh, does not include for-profit institutions or technical schools, colleges, universities. It's like, basically, it's kindergarten, primary, secondary, public or private schools, public or private nursery schools. Daycares, we have those as a separate, uh, facility, I think those are, yeah, we have those under personal and group care facilities, which is, it's still under the community facilities area, but it's a different category for that. So I guess the long, that was a long way of answering your question, that daycares are not included in community education.
But if it's a pre-K, 'cause you read nursery schools.
Yes, if it was a pre-public or private, pre-K, private nursery school, something like that, that would still qualify.
Is that excluded for-profit?
Yeah, excluded for-profit colleges, technical schools, and universities. Of course, now, if, we can always, I mean, this is, we're still draft, so, I mean, we can always make changes if we need to.
The southeast corner there, why does that tail go out towards the purple?
'Cause that's industrial zone property. The setbacks list. And, uh, the next map here, this kinda shows you the difference between the two. You can kinda see the, the outline. You can, the, the red area would be the fifteen hundred foot from all property, right through here. This is, it was on the original map, and then this is what the green would be, what's allowed under what we're proposing.
So this is pretty much the same as what Williamson County's doing.
Pretty much, yes, sir. The, the acreages are pretty, almost, I think are pretty much exact, based on this test scenario.
Doug, a question or two. The, the last line of the proposed, where it says, "All structures with the exception of parking, fencing, and offices must be at least two hundred feet from any property line." What is your, define the offices for me?
Administrative functions, uh, things like that. You know, I, I guess, what kinda what we were going for with this was, you know, if there's a place where, where they answer the phone, basically, where the office workers park and
You're talking about within the quarry?
Within the quarry itself.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is within the boundary of
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
That's, that's, I'm sorry, I was confused. And, and do we need a proposed distance from center line of any, or, or shoulder of any state route or city street or county?
I don't think so, because the two hundred feet would apply to any other property line. So I, I, I don't really see that being necessary.
Do we need to factor in any other sort of, um, and I don't know what the zoning would be for them, so maybe not, but any other sort of institutional use, like a hospital or nursing home, or, I'm just thinking along the same lines as schools?
I mean, some of the regulations that we looked at in our report did make that as a, as part of their regulations. Seems like Knox County was one that did, if I remember right. Yes, uh, yeah, Knox County had public parks, schools, churches, hospitals, sanitariums, or residential zones. I'm trying to see if anybody else did. Batavia Township, Ohio, used educational institutions, religious places of worship, or institution for human care.
And that's pretty broad, institution for human care.
Yes, it is.
The white, the white scales would be considered, uh, with offices, right?
I'm sorry?
The scales would be considered office. Lot, the scales are usually right by offices where they come out.
Uh, you, you're, are you talking where they load, where they weigh the trucks and everything? Right, yeah, and we, uh, well, based on the regulation we have now, they'd have to be at least two hundred feet from the, from the property lines.
Uh, all structures with the exception of parking, fencing, and offices must be at least two hundred feet. So if you got an office and you got in conjunction with, you got your weight scales, 'cause a lot of times that window is right at the end of the office.
And we can put And if you want, we can add scales to that, I mean
I, I think they go hand in hand in a lot of most places.
And, and they may, I mean, we can make that, we can clarify that here, offices including scales.
If you don't, if you don't, if it, if it ever comes up, that will be something to be brought up.
Okay, make a note on that. Yeah. 'Cause that's not really, uh, they're just pulling up, and, yeah, they're really just pulling up, getting weighed, and driving on, really is all they're doing, right? And kinda going back to the discussion, we were talking about church, or, not sure, but hospitals and those kind of things. Uh, I mean, we have, there is a category in our zoning for healthcare facilities, which would include nursing homes and hospitals. There is a category for that, so, I mean, if you felt comfortable, we could add that in there.
It was just a question, I don't know if we need to or not, I just wanted to at least think about it.
Sure, we don't, um, I don't think we currently do, I think it's just schools. I know that one mile is schools. And I think everything else is just
I guess I'm just thinking, if we're gonna take into account schools, why schools and not nursing homes, you know?
And, and look how long it's been since we have changed these. Who knows how long it'll be since we changed these again? And the county's, uh, character will probably change quite a bit in that length of time. So there may be nursing homes and things out there in these areas. I, I see why we shouldn't go ahead and place that in there.
We don't currently, but there's nothing that says we can't do it. I mean, again, we're still
That is becoming a major need now.
Yeah, we can certainly add that in there without any problem.
Yeah, I would use that whole category of the healthcare facilities that you were talking about.
Okay. So we've got the scales in there, along with the, to include with the exceptions, and then also the healthcare facilities.
Okay, and then I just wanna clarify something Craig asked. That last sentence in that proposed language says, "All structures with the exception of parking, fencing, and offices." So if the scales are near the offices, then they can be within the two hundred feet of the property line?
They would be able to, yes.
Okay.
If we add the scales in there, then they, they would be able to.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I was reading that right. So what kind of structure could you potentially have that wouldn't be an office at a rock quarry? I don't
Conveyor belts, uh, crush, rock crushers.
Okay.
I mean, there's several different
Structure, I think, building.
Right, right.
Okay. If we change our current ordinance, we have to have a public hearing, correct?
You mean our, what we're currently under, or are you talking the, the draft?
Both.
Well, I mean, if you're gonna make changes to our current resolution, then the answer to that question is yes. There would have to be, at this point, we're still making changes to the draft. So, I mean, we've had, what, two public hearings, I guess, at this point? I mean, if you guys wanna have a third, that's entirely up to you, so.
Smart thing to do probably is not to make any changes to our current one, but to add the changes to
Yes, yes, sir.
The new one, okay.
Because especially the way we're doing it, we're using the land use categories. Of course, we don't have that in our current ordinance, current resolution, so that would be kinda problematic, but, uh, but it can be done.
Patis made a comment a minute ago that, about the future, uh, and I, I can't foresee any interstates or anything coming through. I can't foresee that, but that doesn't mean it won't happen at some point in time. Uh, the state comes in and pretty much does what they want as far as quarrying and really, doesn't even have to really ask our permission, right?
There are provisions in the state code that when they are using borrowed material for a state project, they're exempt from local zoning requirements, yes, sir.
They can come in and extract pretty much
What they need, yes, sir.
Let's just say at some point in time, some of the long-term projects, like expansion of, I don't know, Jefferson Pike or Two Thirty-One or something like that happens, so, and, and, uh, they need rock to do some of those things. Uh, could they go back to the ones that they've already used in the past and get that rock? Or would, or would they just find a place that they wanted to get it and borrow it?
I'm sure they could.
They could, but, I mean, it's, they're gonna look at haul cost and what it's going to, they're gonna say it's gonna be cheaper to use it on-site and, and have something right there, right there on-site and close to, where they don't have and, and have something right there, right there on side and close to, where they don't have to haul halfway across the county.
We had, the last project they were working on, on Highway ninety-nine going out toward Eagleville, you know, they had, I think it was off of Mount Pleasant, they had a pit out there that they were using. Of course, they're working on Jefferson Pike, like Mr. Sullivan said, I doubt that they would haul all the way from Rockvale all the way up to Jefferson Pike. It just wouldn't be practical to do it.
All right. So if I'm, if I understand where we currently are with the proposed, or based on the nursing homes and other facilities like that, is that, are we creating a new category, or not a category? Are we adding that to the sentence about community assembly, community education? Are we, are we adding some more specific?
Yeah, that, that's my, that was my understanding of what, how the discussion was going, that we wanted to add healthcare facilities to that as well, yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, kind of, and again, I'm not trying to copy any other county, but Knox County, kind of... Let's see, what do they talk about? They, they define it as public parks, school, church, hospital, sanitarium or residential zoning. So they're, they're a little more specific in...
Right, and...
Definition.
Right, and I think the way that we're handling it with the, the categories we have, I, I think that would be preferable here, because that way you don't have to list out, if we, if we wanted to do nursing homes and hospitals, we wouldn't have to list specifically hospitals, nursing homes and whatever may come under healthcare facilities. You just list healthcare facilities.
Right.
And as that's defined in the ordinance, that's already part of it.
Yeah, that's cool.
Doug, is a thousand feet enough? I mean, I, I know we're, you know, right now we're at fifteen hundred and I've seen the maps. I'm just thinking, in this scenario here, this is a vacant lot, this big, what are you, scenario here, you get six hundred and twenty acres. But say there is, you know, a residential area in the yellow that's already built out and everything. Is a thousand feet enough? Let's just take the left-hand yellow there, and they start mining right there on that corner. They could be within, in, in this case, what, thousand and fifty feet?
As long as they're with, not within, well...
No, the property line.
Yeah, they'd have to be at least a thousand feet from the property line. Now, then there's rear setbacks on the other side.
Another eighty feet or a hundred feet.
I mean, you may have another, right, you may have another, at least twenty feet from the, on the residential side for setbacks. I, I mean, I mean, that's really a decision y'all are going to have to make. I mean, I think it's, I think that strikes a compromise between what we currently have, the fifteen hundred feet, and some of the other regulations that we've seen during our study that are a lot less than, than that.
That's definitely something I want to have a public hearing on, that's a pretty big change.
I mean, and something else to keep in mind too, as far as this is concerned, is that this only applies to new quarries. The existing quarries that are out there, I mean, quite frankly, most of them can't meet the standards we have today, let alone what we're proposing now. So, those are grandfathered at this point. And I know that there were some comments at the public hearing, especially from the people around the Burtonob Road area, about how this was going to get so much closer to their property. This has no effect on the existing quarries. They are where they are, and that's, you know, there's really not much we can do about that, so...
But can they expand?
Well, they can expand now, I mean, based on the property that they have. Now, the one on Burtonob Road, of course, which is in litigation, I don't want to talk too much about that, but part of the issue that they had was they were asking for some zoning in addition to what they had on the property. So, I mean, state law allows them to expand on their property.
Okay, so, so when we use the term grandfather, the existing quarries, they, they're grandfathered from distances, they're also free to expand the quarry?
They can expand on the property they currently own, based on the grandfathering statutes in the state law.
Okay.
On the property, they can't go on to adjacent property.
Right.
But they can expand on their own. There are, there are provisions for that in the state code.
So are, are we looking for a motion to, to do what?
I think we're probably looking for a motion to adopt.
Or just the direction he wants, right. I mean, just, I mean, obviously, any decisions you make today, I mean, this, you're not voting on the entire ordinance at this point. I mean, we're just really talking about this one specific issue. And basically, all you're saying is, yes, this is the direction we want to go. Staff, make the changes as such, and then we'll incorporate that into the revised draft.
And this does not need a full commission, they don't, they wouldn't vote on this, the full county?
Well, not at this point, not at this point. Now, whenever you move the entire draft, right, because we're, at this point, this is just a work session on the draft.
Right, right.
Yeah, now, whenever you move the whole draft forward to the county commission, then yes, it will require, the whole thing will require a public hearing. But right now, we're still just talking about changes to the draft, so...
So we're scaling from fifteen to a thousand?
That's correct.
That's the, the red ones were, was where we was before, is that correct?
Right, this is what our current regulations would, this is the quarryable area that our current regulations would allow. And this green area, the whole green area is under what's proposed.
A thousand. So giving them a little bit more usable space?
I'm sorry?
We're giving them a little bit more usable space?
For quarrying activities, yes, ma'am.
That little bit more is, goes from what, ten percent to forty percent, something like that? Or close to it?
Thirty percent, roughly, not quite, but right around thirty percent. Maybe thirty, I mean, it's, it's not, it's just a touch over a third, it looks like, so, about thirty-three, roughly.
It looks huge from here.
And, and again, I, I just, I just want to make sure, and I know the planning commission understands, but just for the sake of discussion, you know, so much depends on the surrounding zoning and the shape of the property. You know, this, just because this one tract allows you the ability to have about a third of the property to be quarried, doesn't mean that another six hundred and twenty acre tract that's shaped differently would give you the same amount. It probably, depending on it's, the way it's, on its shape, may give you less. If you don't have, again, the zoning, we just put these up there, for example, but if it doesn't have these pockets of industrial areas, especially this one, and this one up here, I mean, this two hundred acres goes down, I mean, you're basically, you're probably, this whole area right here is probably shaved off from there. So you're talking even less than that. So, so much of it depends on the surrounding zoning and the shape, that we're just, we're using this for example purposes, but understand that this is not typical. You know, it, there's so many factors involved that, you know, another six hundred and twenty acre parcel could give you, you know, fifteen percent, just depending on the way it's shaped.
What's our, our current setback is what?
Fifteen hundred feet, and then a mile from schools.
So we're taking away the mile?
And just making it a thousand.
You're going just a thousand.
And then we're lumping in community assembly facilities, which are basically churches and those kind of facilities, and also healthcare facilities, as we understand the discussion.
So in essence, schools would meet, would be a requirement, just like everything else, would be a, a same requirement as everything else. So that whole discussion about building a school would be kind of a midpoint at that point in time, about building one?
Right, I, I mean, it, it may come up depending on, you know, if you have an institutionally zoned piece of property that happened to have a school on it that was within, you may go from two hundred feet to a thousand because of that. But, so, I don't see that happening a lot, but it could happen.
Let me ask, ask you this, and, and I'm just getting clarification here. I, I can understand dropping the, the mile. But now we're going from fifteen to a thousand, we've been at fifteen, now we're going back down. And I understand, basically what we're doing, we're just giving a larger area for quarry work. Is, is that totally why we're doing this?
I think that's part of it, but I think it's also to...
What I'm trying to, have we had a request to lower from fifteen hundred to a thousand?
Well, this whole discussion came up as a result of the commission wanting us to look into this a little further. Mr. Lynch, I believe you had brought this up as a concern, so that's why we did the study and, and everything, so...
I'm, I'm just getting clarification before I vote.
Right.
Some of the, some of the thoughts that was kind of going through my mind, and I think some of the other commissioners' minds, is that if you take a piece of property like this and you approve it, and you can use, what, ten percent of it, then the, the life expectancy of that is so much smaller, then they're going to have to have another quarry someplace else. And why not utilize this facility for a longer period of time, so that you won't have to locate one someplace else? So there were some expectations, plus just the, just the use of that property for what we're talking about would be maybe a smarter thing to do as far as long-term planning. There, there were some reasons and rationale for that. Also, just, once again, those rights of whoever bought that property and wanted to put a quarry there. And, and I'll, I'll say this again, and Craig, you've been on this, this commission for over twenty years, and we've never approved one, we've never had to approve one. We, we, we just haven't had to do that. And who knows what the future holds, but, you know, we're probably talking about something that, I don't even know in, in your tenure that, that you'll ever deal with that. But, but putting something in place that, that would be a good use of land twenty or thirty years from now makes a certain amount of sense.
Josh's comments about you're treading, you're treading close to zoning something out when you've got that much of a space, you see, legality of it too, so...
Understand that, but you, you mentioned a while ago about the state and what they can do, and they don't have to come before this group, whatever. I know the spots you're talking about on Mount Pleasant Road and what they used on Highway ninety-nine. I'm approximately two to three miles from where they quarried that. Our ancestral farm was within a mile from that. My two to three miles from that quarry where they quarried that, my house, I could feel it when they did it. In fact, I was with a group of people that did not want it quarried where it was quarried. Champion Run Golf Course sat directly under that, had two to three lakes there. I, I lived there all my life and I knew that property. That rock they quarried there, it was what is known as shale rock. And whenever that shale rock is disturbed, it caves in and moves and things like that. I understand the mile and things like that, because I've been within that, you know, and, and that's why I'm questioning, you know, as, as we make these moves. I, I think I understand too where some of these quarries are going. I live out there in some of those places, and I, I know Craig does too, where some of these quarries will be going there too, maybe in the future. But the thing also is we all like nice roads. We all need rock. And, and we can't just haul it from who knows where, so it all figures in there. And that, and that's why I was asking these questions and whatever. It's sort of like the landfill, nobody wants it beside your house, and nobody wants it there, but I, I don't know, I, I mean, that, that's just why I'm thinking these questions and, and I, I understand.
They're pretty good questions. We've been talking about this for a couple of years, actually.
Um, for, from a practical standpoint, do we know what the distance is from current property owners to rock quarries? Because it's been within the last two years, I don't remember what the debate was about. We were looking at something, and it seems like we had a flood of neighbors that lived around one of the rock quarries show up, and they were complaining about dust and, you know, damages to their property. And I just don't remember what the distance is between their homes and the active quarry activities. And so I'm just trying to figure out, you know, we, we always try to rely on the experts and what their projections are and what's safe and the engineers, and that's really all we can do. But when you have real-world examples, when you have real-world application, I'm always interested in looking at what's really going on. So do we know what the real distance is? Do you remember any of those details?
I, I know which one you're talking about, the top of my head, I don't remember. I would say it's closer than what we're proposing at this point.
If they're in line, if they're compliant, because that's one of the complaints we've heard too, is that the quarries are not being compliant.
Okay, well, at least one particular, but the, of course, a lot of the folks living around the proximity of that one quarry moved in after the quarry, the quarry was there a lot longer, there are a couple that, that weren't, but the majority of them were there after the quarry had been established and was, was operational. But off the top of my head, exactly how close they are to property lines, I, I just don't have that right in front of me.
If we move this onto the full commission, will you see if you can't take a look at that, or even maybe pull up the old meeting minutes? And I'm sure they, because I remember they brought photographs and examples and all kinds of specific information.
Sure.
I, I'd just like for this group to examine some of those real-life, you know, situations before we advance it onto the full commission. Because you're going to have commissioners in those districts, have quarries in those districts, who are going to have strong objection to any changes, I can imagine. So I just think it's better for us to do our homework.
Right, now, that, that shouldn't be hard to do at all.
I'm looking at my notes, that was mid-year two thousand and eight. And one of the big complaints was, was the noise. And really, the other big complaint was the hours of operation, because they were doing it at night.
The dust.
Yeah, and they were all, you know, the neighbors, and I'm not going to, this is a generality, but, you know, their big complaint was, during the day when everybody's at school and they're all at work, is one thing, but when you get home at five, they didn't want to hear blasting for the next six hours. And that was the main complaint, as I scan my notes here.
I think, just like everything else, the, the mining has, has changed to the point where a lot of the problems can be mitigated to a degree, even I think that Rogers Group, if I remember right, had, had some proposals that would eliminate some of the noise and some of the dust and, and do some things that would maybe make life a little bit better. So some of the new ways of operating a quarry would be better than some of the grandfathered situations that we have right now. So it might not be as bad on the neighbors or the neighborhood in the future if, if some of those things could be met.
And I think it's, it's fair to, to point out as well that, you know, even regardless of what we propose here, any new quarry in Rutherford County is going to have to come through this body. It's going to have to go through the, the county commission for zoning, and then still have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a, for a special exception. You know, and the whole purpose of that process is to allow the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals a chance to look at it and say, is this really an appropriate place to put this? You know, I, I don't want there to be this misconception out there that the moment we start, you know, whenever these new regulations take effect, that there's just, you know, ten quarry companies ready in the wings, just ready to come in and submit their application, so they can start blasting rock. You know, I don't think that's the case at all, and quite frankly, you're going to get a shot at every single one of them. And the commissioners who are on this board and the county commissioner will have two shots at it. And then if it's approved there for the zoning, it still has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a third approval. So it's not that, you know, this is not something that you're just going to wake up one day, the people in the, some of these areas where a quarry may decide to try to locate, they're just not going to wake up one day and blasting outside their back window, you know, it's, there's going to be a fairly detailed, you know, involvement process for that.
Just, just two points. One is, and, and Pettis said this, and I, I'm going to say it a little more clear. The demand for aggregates twenty-four hours a day, I mean, it really is. And you can't develop, you can't grow, you can't build anything without rock. And I understand, Doug, I think you said, or maybe it was Jeff, it would be better to have maybe one large as opposed to several minis around. I think it's easier to manage. And also too, when, when, if and when we have to address a quarry, looking at my notes at the Rogers Group deal, their, their average was three hundred trucks in and out a day. And I know, I remember our concern too, back in oh-eight, was the width and current status of Burtonob Road and the danger that proposed. So I guess my question is, for the future, as we are looking at a quarry site, do we also have the capability, does this board have the capability then to demand proper and safe road? Only, can we only dictate the road in front, or that, that fronts the quarry property for ingress and egress? Or, or can we push the limit a little bit and have them develop the road to the nearest, whatever, local, local road, state road, state route?
I think you do have the ability as far as in the frontage along there. Now, part of, now, because a lot of what you're talking about goes back to the same discussion we have on subdivisions, you know, what can we legally ask them to do and not?
Which I think is just the frontage.
Right. Now, we do have some provisions in here as far as access to the property, demonstrating access, demonstrating, you know, traffic patterns, kind of showing where and, you know, what road networks they're going to be utilizing. You know, there's probably even, depending on the... You know, there's probably even, depending on the amount of trips that they're gonna be generating, the possibility of them having to do some sort of a traffic study. On that, in that regard, you know, to determine, uh, what possible road improvements may be necessary. And, you know, based going through that, uh, particular part of it, you know, that might be something that, um, you may have a little more.
Well, and I guess on the flip side, we would also then have the power to turn down a quarry site. Even though they met all whatever distances from boundaries we agreed to. We could still turn it down if the road we thought was hazardous or insufficient.
Right. I mean, there are other performance criteria that they have to meet, you know, the setbacks are not the only one. Uh, like you said, you know, mitigation of road damage, access, screening, security measure, pre-blessed, or, I mean, there's several things in here that you could look at and say. Based on these particular issues, you know, after reviewing your application, we don't feel that this meets X, Y, and Z. And because of that, we recommend denial of the zoning of this property. Now, some of those, I say that, now, some of those issues may be taken up more by the Board of Zoning Appeals than by this body necessarily. Uh, I mean, you're gonna be looking at it more from the zoning standpoint of the zoning of the property as opposed to the specific use that's being proposed. So a lot of those issues may be have, be dealt with at the Board of Zoning Appeals, but I mean, you will have the ability. I mean, I think you will have a certain amount of flexibility even in the zoning of the property.
That certainly is a good point, Mike. Um, do, do we have, can you research that? Do we have, could we or do we or have the capability of requiring those, some of these little roads, country roads, or little country roads. That two rock trucks meeting or, or me meeting a rock truck, it's a, it's a little bit hazardous, but some of those little roads that it'd take a long way to get to a road that's. That we think would be suitable, but, um, the good, I, you know, do we know whether we even have that capability? Just to impose it on a rock quarry other than something else?
That's a dan- a lot of dangerous traffic coming out of that, Doug.
Yeah, along these little roads, you can get to a bigger road like, uh, like North Road, get off to Armstrong Valley Road, which is a little larger road right there. It's, uh, may not be, may not be as bad as we think it is to just get to, to a road that we think is acceptable.
Yeah, Ms. Emsley was just pointing out that in currently in the regulations that we're looking at, kind of along those lines that you're talking about with the small country roads. Such you shall be restricted to lots or parcels that are directly contiguous to and have legal frontage for access on roadways established as arterials. Or collectors in the Rutherford County Long Range Transportation Plan. So those small local roads that may be out, small country roads that we don't call collectors or arterials, wouldn't, we wouldn't allow that anyway. Uh, of course, then there's the mitigation of road damage with road bonds and, and those kind of things, but there is a, there is some existing language in here as far as location of those kind of facilities.
And, and also would, okay, if we get to those arterial roads, which are the larger roads, would we have the capability of putting a turn lanes on those roads? To turn off on the little smaller roads?
Right. And I think, again, I, I think that would probably fall more into the realm of the Board of Zoning Appeals, but I do think that that ability does exist. Based on the access and based on what the information they're gonna show us on the front end. You know, I think that, you know, those aren't unreasonable requests by any means for something like that, depending on the situation, of course. But I think that power does exist with the BZA at that point.
I hate to beat a dead horse, you know, or just keep kicking this thing, but, you know, I keep looking back at existing things. In other words, if, if this is built out existing and we took, you know, a thousand feet. You know, if they come in across the road from Oakley, for instance, you know, you got two schools right there. A thousand feet is gonna be awful close to a building that's existing. I'm just using that just. I don't know if we should, you know, like you say, we hadn't looked at one of these in twenty years. I hate to completely re-mente the wheel. And, and I keep looking back at this same scenario here, if there is a fully developed subdivision somewhere close, just because, you know, there's a lot here. You know, but we give them five hundred feet cluck to let, we're gonna allow them to mine five hundred foot closer to that subdivision than we have. And I just, I don't feel comfortable with that, especially allowing it to come within, you know, we're, we're taking a mile out away from the schools now. Whether that's a half mile or what that is, I, I'm really uncomfortable knowing that we've got a school that's existing out there and we could. If this is approved, we could, uh, 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 open up a plat that could actually start mining inside of, well, from a thousand foot of the property line of that school. It's gonna be hard for the kids to concentrate, I think, because they're, you know, we're talking about the same hours of operation. You know, class and shaking and shooting and crushing and everything else, they're gonna hear that close.
So recent, Richie, we've had so much discussion on this. You're not alone in that. There's others that feel that same way too. What do you need from us, Doug?
Well, we just kinda need to know what direction you want us to go. I mean, we'll make the changes however you want it. We can leave it like it is or we can make the changes. I mean, we've studied this now. If you feel comfortable just leaving things the way they are, fine, but, uh. I, I mean, it's really at this point, we just kinda need to know which direction you want staff to go here.
Let's, let's, let's take a, a minute to think about this as a commission and, and, uh, if somebody wants to make a proposal, let's do that.
Well, I'd like to see the homework that I asked you to do that, cause I, I kinda struggle with the same thing Richie does. I don't know fifteen hundred feet from a thousand feet. I don't know how big of a difference that's gonna make for the neighboring property owners. If that's enough too much, not, you know, I, I don't know. So I'd like to see what's going on today. What are the, what are the current homeowners struggling with today in reality? Not, not what's zoned and not what's approved, but what are they really doing? You know, are they, are they really, you know, closer than that fifteen hundred feet or whatever, whatever that number is? So that we can create a safe buffer, but then still allow the quarries to operate. I mean, that's what we're struggling for. That's what we're searching for, is to try to find that happy medium for both sides. So if you could get me that, then I feel like the next time we discuss this, I would have more information or have better information than just trying to pick a number.
And I would like to know, um, as far as y'all had said, the attorneys were saying something about we were opening up something, what?
You don't wanna out, you can't outzone.
You can't, you can't zone out a, a use basically based on your regulations, right?
So currently we're zoning out.
Well, no, I wouldn't say that. Um, I won't say that.
You're concerned about being overly restricted.
Right. I, I think the, the regulations.
Regulations are fifteen hundred.
Right.
Moving forward, they want us to re-look at the fifteen hundred, is that?
Well, no, that, yeah, they're, they're, this isn't coming from our county attorney's office. You know, this is just something as we were looking throughout our regulations, as we were updating everything, that we looked at the possibility of, uh. Of possibly relaxing some of those standards for rock quarries.
Okay.
We're more concerned, the attorney's more concerned about instead of fifteen hundred, it goes to two thousand or twenty-five hundred.
Oh, okay.
And that way, there's, there's such a limited available piece of space in the county to do that, then you've out, you've basically outzoned it.
Gotcha, okay.
I mean, the regulations as they're written is, is, you know, there's, I don't think there's anything that says we can't regulate what we're proposing to regulate as far as distance requirements and all that. The issue sometimes come, comes in how those regulations are applied and, and like you said, in real life circumstances, you know. And I'm not saying ours do that, but our existing ones, but it is possible to have regulations and, and not just with rock quarries, with any kind of, of use really. Where the distance requirements are so strong, for lack of a better word, that you've essentially zoned out a particular use in an ordinance. You know, again, not speaking about ours by any means, just in general, that's something that we watch out for.
I think what Rhonda's suggestion, uh, come back with additional information and we'll just discuss it at our, our next meeting once again.
That's fine. We can do that.
I think, uh, Pettis made a comment about being able to feel something for great distances. My in-laws lived a couple of miles away from, maybe a mile away to birdflies from Hoover. And during a drought season, uh, that we had a few years ago, like four or five years ago, maybe even longer. That two or three years where we went really, really dry and grounds were cracking and that thing. They could feel those shocks during that particular period of time. But in normal conditions with normal rain and normal moisture in the ground, they can't feel those things. So there are other conditions too, I think, that kinda come in and, and, and influence all of those kinds of things and, and, uh. Depends upon which way the underground rocks run and all kinds of stuff. It's, it's, you know, we're trying to make decisions that we don't know how it's going to affect somebody a mile away. So all of this discussion, I think is, I think is, is pretty good. So just looking at it for another two weeks and being able to come back with additional information is, is just not gonna hurt anything at all.
I, I have some acquaintances in the geotechnical engineering field and, and I, I would call them and just get their professional thoughts on distances. And I, and I know that's just gonna be a rule of thumb because you're right. It depends on the rock, the seams, the, there's things out of our control we don't know. And perhaps staff, if they have some friends in the geotechnical side of the world, could also get some information. But I, I, I am gonna do that just so I know and can feel better about it.
This is just one of those things and Doug and the staff have given us a, a lot of information. Anything that we wanted and asked, they brought back to us and they're taking a neutral stance in this, which is exactly what they should do. And, uh, and it's gonna be up to us to make a, a decision as to what we think is prudent and appropriate as we move forward in the future. So, uh, additional information is, is what we need and what we'll get, okay?
That's what we'll do.
Any, any other questions, uh, on quarrying? You got, you got something else, Doug?
Yeah, just the, the plan developments. I don't think this discussion will take quite as, as long. I'm just gonna black this out, cause we don't need it. Um, of course, the discussion we had regarding the plan developments, as you recall, and, and this has been a discussion, uh. For a number of the, the meetings that we've had in the past and leading up to today, had to do with the amount of open space that we're providing for plan developments. Under our current regulations, which essentially what we've done is we've taken our current pla- planned event, planned unit development, easy for me to say, standards. And moved them all over into our new draft. The current requirement today is twenty percent open space of the area of the lot. So essentially, if you've got a hundred acres, you're looking at at least twenty acres of open space. Half of which we call usable open space, which has to be more of an improved, can't just be like your floodplain areas or things like that. Has to be actually improved open space like, uh, parks, ballfields, those kind of things. Pretty much a lot of the discussion that we've had in our plan development section has really been on that amount of open space that we're required to provide. And as we stated before, and I'll, for the record, I'll just state it again. Soon after we adopted our revised plan development standards is when the economy really took its downturn. So we really have not had an opportunity to put these standards into practice to see how well they function. So in fairness to, you know, to everybody involved, they're still untested, you know, relatively speaking. Now, some of the changes we have made in our proposed draft has been to take out, uh, you know, subsurface disposal area, step system areas. In the calculation for open space. Uh, and we understood where the development community was coming from on that. You know, basically we're saying, well, we've got a hundred acres of land, again, just using as our nice round number. We're required to have twenty percent for the step system anyway. Now you're requiring another twenty percent in open space. So essentially we're already down to four, uh, sixty percent of the area that we could use for the development. So what we have done is said, okay, you know, we understand where you're coming from on that. We will eliminate the step area from the calculation for open space. So if you have a hundred acres of land, you have a twenty percent area, or excuse me, a twenty acre area for the step system. Your calculation for open space is then based on eighty acres as opposed to the hundred acres. So we did make that change in our current draft. There's still been a lot of concern about the twenty percent open space, however, being that that's too high. Uh, you know, we've heard, uh, some folks say that, you know, don't have any kind of a requirement because every development in and of itself is different. Uh, you, you know, it's, it's hard to say every development should have this much open space just because everyone is unique. As you recall, we did provide some options to you regarding this. One of the options was leave it alone. One of the options was just keep it twenty percent, but don't make any differentiation between usable open space and just regular open area. Just call it twenty percent and just whatever combination of the two they want to do, they can. A, a third option was just reducing everything by half essentially. Instead of twenty percent open space, you have ten percent open space. And then another option would be, there was the possibility of looking at maybe some sort of a, a sliding scale. Depending on the size of the development, staff, based on our research, recommended we didn't, we don't approach that one or we don't try to institute something like that. We just felt that might be, uh, uh, kinda problematic over time for enforcement purposes. And then there was the option to just not, to require open space, but not require any kind of a minimum open space. Just say it has to be provided and allow the commission to take each one on a case by case basis. Based on the discussion we had at the time, uh, the decision was made to just leave everything as is. Uh, we still have been receiving comments on that. Uh, most notably, there was a, an editorial in the paper a couple of weeks ago. Uh, from the Home Builder Association, still having some concerns about the amount of open space. And I think that's kinda what prompted the discussion that we had at our last planning commission meeting, uh, some of the discussion we had at that point. There was a, uh, request that we provide maybe some information as, you know, the total units based on a PUD versus the total units. If it were just a conventional subdivision. And we took some of the more recent ones and there's a sheet on your table, looks like this. It's a little table that was done up by Ms. Emsley. And it, again, it, it's, it's one of these things where if you look at Cedar Brook, which was a PUD, I believe that was over there, uh, on Ocala Road, if I remember correctly. Uh, the PUD that was approved back in two thousand and seven had a total amount of four hundred and thirty-four units. Now, this was even before we had any kind of open space requirements. This was under the old regulations. If you were to take the estimate of a conventional subdivision, assuming the same step area, you're looking at four hundred forty-nine units. Not just a huge amount of, of change between the two. Now, this one, again, was done under the old regulations and the developer, that was the amount of open space they provided, uh, you know, on the front end. You know, we didn't ask for any of that. That's what they, they gave us. Stonebridge Estates, again, another one of those that was approved under the old, uh, regulations, site data. You look at three hundred twelve units, thirteen percent open space is what they were looking at. Of course, they were gonna connect a sewer. Estimated for a conventional subdivision without the open space, you're looking at about three hundred forty-eight lots. Glen Oak Farms, these next two were submitted but withdrawn. Nothing ever other came of either one of them. But, I mean, you can see for Glen Oak Farms, you're looking almost exactly the same amount of yield, eight hundred seventy-six versus eight hundred seventy-nine units, pretty much the same. And then Linwood, which was submitted, but never actually even made it to the, the planning commission. We had a work session on that one, I remember, but never went any further. They were actually gonna get more with the plan development than they were under just the, um, conventional subdivision. Again, assuming they were gonna use city sewer from Smyrna for that last one. But it, uh, whereas we're going through is, I think, it kind of pointed out to us that it's difficult to make that kind of a comparison. Because with a plan development, you're not limited in density to the R fifteen. You know, you're not limited to three units an acre or a minimum of fifteen thousand square foot. I mean, it's pretty much what the developer wants to do in that development. So if he's losing lots, they can make the lots smaller to make up for that, which is a concern, I think, to home builders and some of the other folks that had some concerns with our twenty percent minimum also had. And we've kinda clarified that, that yes, you can ask for density increases to offset any kind of, of area that's being set aside for open space. So, I mean, these just kinda give you just an idea of what you're looking at for open space. Again, you know, you got two of them kind of on the extremes that had, you know, more than thirty percent. One of them, almost half of their area was open space. And even the one that had half open space was getting more lots than what you could have done under a conventional subdivision. So it's, it's difficult to make that kind of a comparison that just because you're requiring someone to set aside ten, twenty percent of open space. That you're automatically gonna get that reduction in lots as well. It's, I don't think that's really a, a fair statement to, to say. But, uh, with that, that, that was just some information that y'all wanted to see. And so again, these are the more recent ones that we've, that we've had. We can do more if you'd like, but this kinda gives you an idea of. And, and again, it, it's, I, I don't know if that analysis really necessarily helps anything just because of the, a lot so much depends on what kind of development they're proposing.
So the city of Murphville, they take them case by case?
That's correct.
I think given this, this set of examples, it does help me see that I think we need to take them case by case. I, I was initially opposed to that, but you know, you can see the difference here of it, like one on sewer versus one on step. I mean, it's, it's pretty, you know, exaggerated differences even on the open space, as you said, across the board. So, you know, we were trying to create a level playing field so everybody knew what was expected of them when they came in the door. We didn't wanna be sort of arbitrary, but, um, it looks like there's gonna be some advantages to looking at them one at a time.
Now, and I, and I'll, I've said this before and from staff's standpoint, I'll say it again, of course, the commission can vote to do what, what they please. We like some kind of a requirement on there, just for that reason you were just saying, uh, you know, you don't wanna see arbitrary. One developer comes in with five percent and the planning commission appears okay with that, the next person comes. The next person comes in with the same five percent, well, we think you need more open space. Well, why? You didn't make developer A do more, why are you making me do more? I think there's that there.
Depending on the topography of the land, you know, how it's built out of. If I remember right, on Linwood, I think a lot of their land, the way it was laid out was not ideal for development anyway, but they were still allowed to get credit for, for open space. So I think that's why that number was so high, if I'm remembering that one correctly. So, I don't know, I'm struggling with that.
Well, again, it's up to the commission. We, we do like some kind of a minimum, but I mean, obviously, we'll do what the will of the commission is.
Could we not make it a minimum of ten percent?
That's what I'm thinking.
Subject to what the commission or what the staff suggests?
Well, yeah, I mean, you could say cut down from twenty to ten percent and, and then just kind of go from there. It'd be the same issue, right, it'd be the same issues from that point, right? I mean, again.
That way, they, they would at least have a minimum, although you got to at least have a minimum to this now.
And unfortunately, we've seen some developments that, I mean, there weren't many of them, but there were a few plan developments that came in. I mean, really, the, the, they were just using it as a way to get more lots and weren't providing any kind of open space. Now, these are older, older ones. But, and, and I guess that's from a staff standpoint, we want to avoid that situation where a developer just looks at it as a way to increase lot yield without trying to provide any kind of open space in return. So that, that's our concern. Of course, you know, the planning commission has a, a part in that when they look at that as well, but you know, we would catch something like that on the front end.
I'm going to throw this out there, a bit of information that I, I really want to see if we can get verified. One of my headaches at the last meeting, we were talking about the step system space and that CUD, I'm sorry, yeah, typically fenced, they fenced that area.
Right.
But I got this second-handed, which is always dangerous. Do, can we, can we request a more nicer gate or fence surrounding like a stockade or a three-rail kind of a system that is more aesthetically pleasing, certainly? Because I think that CUD's problem is they just don't want vehicles to be driving on the, on the land. You could go out and play kickball or play catch out there, but they don't want that liability. So I think that the, they just have to have a barrier. But I would much rather see a three-rail split fence than a six or eight-foot chain link if I was living in that PUD and was looking out my balcony over the twenty percent open space and it wasn't fenced up like a prison.
I, I mean, I think as part of the, the PUD package, you might be able to make that request. Now, I doubt CUD would be the ones wanting to, you know, put up the cost for it.
Well, then that could be the developer to do that. But I'm just, I'm wondering, and that's why I would like for staff to find out, do, do we have the ability to pick an aesthetic or, or a kind of a fencing that falls under our current fencing or landscaping guide?
More aesthetic fencing for the step areas.
Exactly, exactly. Because that would make a huge difference if, if I was a resident.
I would think, I mean, I'm just, we, and we'll look into this. I would think that you probably do have that kind of an ability. If the developer was willing to put that up on the front end, you know, as part of their development, you know, and we could just tell them when they come in to meet with us prior to.
A chain link costs, if a chain link costs ten and a wooden costs fifteen, he pays the different, he pays the five.
Or that, or he just provides the, yeah, whatever, however it works. But I, I would, we'll look into that, but I, I would think just my, my, I guess my knee-jerk reaction is that we probably could just request that of the development, of developer on the front end of things.
Yeah, okay.
But, yeah.
I, I don't know if there's any, I don't know how to word this, but I guess kind of what I was thinking about is, in terms of setting a minimum, if, if somebody, if we set a minimum of open space, say of ten percent, and, and we've already laid the groundwork by saying with a planned unit development that you can trade open space for density. I wouldn't want to see them come in and maximize that ninety percent with as much density as they could and they still only gave us ten percent. I guess what I'm thinking is, is there some way to trade up density? You know, because if we set ten percent as the minimum, then that, that's what we're going to get. You know, nobody's going to come in, I wouldn't think, and volunteer more than ten percent unless there's something in it for them. And that's kind of what I'm seeing as the PUD is kind of a negotiation. And so if we take them one at a time, then is there some way for us to say, okay, well, if you do this, then you get that? Because like if you, if you developed it out as is, you would get this many units. But if you give us, you know, or give the, you know, the community this much open space, then your density goes to Y or it goes to W or to V, you know what I'm saying? Is there some way to, and, and does that go back to the sliding scale? Because I don't mean for it to be the sliding scale, that's not, that's not my desire. My desire is to do what's right for that community and that piece of property that's aesthetically pleasing and works for everybody.
I think you would start getting back to a sliding scale on that. Now, we would have to look as far as how density might be tied into all that, but I fear that that might get into the same situation we're looking at for the open space. If you have so many acres, you have to provide so many open, so many acres of open space. But except what we're saying here now is the more open space you provide, the more density you can, it's kind of tied into each other. We would have to look into that and see if there's.
So then maybe you would say, then you're for that ten percent or whatever, I don't, I don't know. I'm just trying to think out loud of.
Is this ten percent usable?
Well, we hadn't talked about that yet. We hadn't debated on the usable versus open. Because, because you know, the, part of the premise of the whole open space was really to try to protect, you know, and preserve land. It wasn't necessarily the idea to make it recreation space.
Right, and that's why, in our current regulation, basically what we have is the twenty percent, half of which has to be usable. Of course, if you just go to ten percent and don't change anything else, the same thing happens. You've got ten percent, half of which has to be usable. So, I, I mean, the only thing you're really changing is the amount. But as far as the density and all that, I mean, I'm.
Could you cap the density? If they're, if they're giving up ten percent, could you cap the density at what they would have gotten had it not been? Because that's my fear, is that if we say you get it for increased density, they've given it up.
I mean, I guess.
They've gained more than the community has gained.
I guess you could, but why would you want to, I guess? Because if you're capping the density as to what they would have been allowed to have anyway, under the R, I guess I'm, I'm assuming your meaning, under the R fifteen, then I don't know why a developer would even want to go that route. Basically, all you're saying is you're, it'd be a density-neutral thing at that point. And I, I think part of what we're kind of trying to sell as a planned development is that you can go above the density that's allowed under a conventional subdivision.
That, that was my concern, because right now, there's no cap, because we've just said you, you're allowed to apply for increased density with no ceiling.
Well, yeah, but, but I think there's always going to be, I, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, there's always going to be the constraints with the property as far as what it can handle, as far as the amount of soils for step or if it's on sewer or the capacity of the sewer. Plus, you know, if they're talking like townhome developments and things like that, there's always parking and things that have to be taken into account, landscaping, screening, those kind of things. I mean, it's just not a whole, sky's the limit, you know, we're going to have a fifty-foot, you know, a fifty-story skyscraper there to be able to, you know, to, to put all these people in.
I just know from, I've been on this long to know that we can only enforce what's in writing.
Right, right.
And that I'm trying to think about outside the box of if we do this, what, you know, what, what words aren't written? What things aren't being said that could potentially harm us.
And another thing too, that's on, heard on that is the new stormwater regulations that are coming out. They're going to kind of, uh, kind of help with that, with a little more open space because in three years, any impervious surface that they do add, that one inch of rainfall that falls on that cannot leave. So you're going to start seeing bigger ponds, bigger areas. Now, it's not going to be a huge difference, but I mean, it will, I mean, when you start, if you getting into those dense places where it's parking lots, townhomes around top of it, there, there where's a lot of pervious surface, impervious surface, you're going to have to have a big retention pond to be able in, and not only just a retention pond, but also swales to get to that, to be able to maintain that one inch of rainfall that falls on that site that can't leave.
But we can look at some, I mean, obviously, we can look into anything. You know, we do have a, 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 a report on plan developments that, and density is one of those areas. Now, it's not something we've really spent a whole lot of time looking into just because we've, we've not been asked to do that. But we can certainly do look back at that report to see what kind of recommendations it makes.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to be equitable. You know, when it, I, I see, like I said, I've always seen that open space as a trade-off. They get, you know, they get more density, the community benefits from the open space. I just want that to be in equitable wording.
Right. There was a note that was passed to me about maintenance of the open space. And in these situations for plan developments, the maintenance goes back to typically the homeowners association who maintains as the county doesn't get involved in, in the grass or cutting grass or maintaining the open areas. That really falls to the homeowners associations that are developed for those areas. So that note was passed along, I wanted to make sure that was answered.
And, and just to help me refresh my memory, if we stuck with the eighty-twenty, the roads count on the eighty side? Let me say that differently. The, the road.
It's a, it's a growth calculation. It's a grow, yeah, we don't say take the roads out, take this out. The only thing, at this point, the only thing they're proposing to take out would be the step area.
Right.
So if you have a hundred acres, twenty acres of step, it's calculated on eighty acres. We don't take out the roads and things at that point.
Mike, you, on a ten percent, were you talking usable or split at ten percent?
Well, it's, it's a great question. I, I'm a proponent of the ten percent as a minimum. But much for what Rhonda just talked about, to keep a natural green area, to me, that is unusable. If I'm, if I'm defining it correctly. I mean, I don't want, well, you might have a walking trail through it, but I don't want playground, I don't want a swimming pool. I would like to see at least part of it remain natural. And whether it's even manicured, because is another thing, depending on the grass type or anything like that, it may just be like raw land. So I'm a little torn with maybe still having half of the ten be. If I want half of the ten to be natural, would I define that as unusable space? How do I define, how do I define five percent of a hundred acre tract to maintain its natural?
But we already, I mean, the, the usable open space and just open space are already defined in our plan development regs.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't think you have to worry too much about that. I guess to answer your question, I don't think you have to come up with anything more specific than what you just said.
Okay, all right. Then Craig, I, I guess, well, I'm still not sure where, still not sure where I'm going there.
Yeah, you asked, you asked, you asked for ten, ten percent usable and, and my usable is, like I said before, right down at the river, that's my usable, but we're, you know, wouldn't be somebody else's usable. If, if we say ten percent usable, there's going to be a lot of little pockets and stuff they don't want. And they go, we're going, we're going to get more than ten percent, you can count on it. Because they, you know, they don't want it, give it some.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's either solid rock or something they can't, they can't develop.
This is how we've got usable, I'm reading it from page nine dash five. Usable open space, an area or areas within the boundaries of a development that are designed, set aside and maintained. I'm sorry, yeah, I am reading usable, sorry. An area or areas within the boundaries of a development that are designed, set aside and maintained for either active or passive recreation or both and are available and accessible for use and the enjoyment by all residents of the development or designated portion of a development. And then, I thought I had written.
Doesn't say that it has to be a base pile for you.
No, and going further, yeah, going further along, yeah, going further along down on that, those same regulations that Ms. Allen was referring to. You know, permitted uses for just open space would be green belts that serve as buffers between land uses, using existing vegeta, vi, sorry, existing vegetation or an aesthetic amenity such as boulevard trees, agricultural pasture lands or preservation of important natural features, which could be, you know, just about anything really. Usable open space is suitably, must be suitably improved for its intended use. Active recreation facilities are encouraged. Permitted uses include, but are not limited to pedestrian bike, multipurpose trails, passive recreation areas like a park at park or an active recreation area such as a ballfield or playground or something like that. So th- those are kind of the differences between the, the two, as we currently have it defined.
So help me out. Do you want, do you want, let's, let's just, easy math. Do you want ten percent set aside untouched? Or do you want ten percent that you can play bike? I mean, that's where I'm having a hard time trying to understand. Because the amen, the amenities of a PUD such as a pool, a volleyball thing, that's all counting towards that ten percent or twenty percent, the way it's currently written. And so, and most PUDs, I would think have a, would have a nice pool.
Many of them do.
And a community, you know, community area.
Community center or something like that.
Playground.
But you could get all that on a half acre.
Right.
You know, I mean, you wouldn't need a, or an acre, I mean, you wouldn't need a tremendous amount of space.
Right.
For that.
Right.
I would recommend calling it usable, no, just call it usable. That way, they're not trading in the junk that they don't want. You know, whether, now, you know, it could be improved, it could be an open untouched set of, you know, area with a walking trail defined through it's approved.
Right, yeah.
Or grove of trees.
Yeah, the, the only thing, what I'm trying to do there is to protect that ten, that, that ten percent of being not a bluff.
Okay.
Something that just can't be used.
So, so what you're saying is, common, common sense would tell you if you had a big lot, you're not going to be able to use all that land anyway. Whether the soils are bad or it's solid rock or it's a sinkhole or it's a cliff, it could be anything. What you're saying is, you don't want that developer to swap that junk land, I'll call it, or get credited for that. You would still like to see, that's fine, that's the price you pay for buying that land. We still want ten percent of usable space. Am I, am I saying what you're, what I thought I heard?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you're, and that in addition to, like Todd, talking about the sinkhole, you're going to get two, but that's going to put it up to twelve, thirteen, fourteen percent.
Right, you can't count that towards the, because that's.
No, but you're going to get it, aren't you, Todd?
Well, and that's, if there's a stream along the property, I mean, we'll have a sixty-foot buffer on both sides of the stream bank.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, I, I, I don't know how, don't remember how that affects in the regulation, but it's also something to keep in mind. That will be a set aside as a stream buffer, sixty foot on top of each bank, that they will have to give us that I would assume would go towards open space.
Probably.
So, I mean, depending on, depending on how long of a stream creek you have, I mean, that hundred and twenty-foot wide strap, just the strip there could add up.
I think I just heard Richie say something different than what Mike was saying. Because we were talking about the, the ten percent that you get, what you do with it after you get the ten percent. What I thought I heard Richie say was he wants ten percent developable land, not usable. We were saying usable in terms of residential use. I just want to make sure we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah, I'm just saying usable, whether it's a walking trail or it's a, you know, just usable land.
Kids can go toss a ball around, a football around, something like that on.
But where Mike was talking about a bluff, are we putting the bluff in the ten percent? Or we're not putting the bluff in the ten percent?
No, no.
That's a, that's an extra three or four percent you go.
Well, it depends on what kind of bluff you're talking about. In other words, when, when he's talking about the creek, yeah, that, I agree with that, because you can make, you know, that can be used. A bluff wall, you know, it's going to be, unless you make a rock climbing facility out of, you know, there's some things you can do.
But that's also not developable land, right?
But it's also unusable.
Yeah, but it's usable.
How would you use a bluff? How would you use a cliff?
I mean, like I say, rock climbing, you know, like you can, there's a lot of natural things you can do with it.
I mean, just a couple, uh, with, there are certain provisions in our current, well, in the, the PUD regs do allow for stormwater detention or retention facilities to be used as part of the open space requirement. I mean, there, there's, there's six different criteria here. If they meet those criteria, then they can count that. If we're looking at ten percent, and let me just throw this out there for discuss, really, if, if we're looking at making the entire ten percent usable open space, I don't think we've really changed anything at this point. Because our current regulations require half of the twenty percent to be usable open space, which is basically ten percent of the area. So I, I understand where y'all are coming from, but just understand that if that is what you want to do, I don't think anything's really changed at that point. You're just saying, we want to require ten percent open space and it all has to be usable, basically. And, and whatever is not usable, quote unquote, cannot be counted as open space, period. You, you know, your bluffs or, you know, the, the natural stream area, the floodplain area that doesn't have a walking trail or anything like that, it's out there. It's, I mean, for the sake of discussion, it's open space, but it's not counted as anything. So, just based on what I'm hearing at least, if you make the whole ten percent usable, I don't think anything's really changed when we currently do.
All right, so if you did ten percent and did five and five?
I mean, that would be, the only change there would be the amount of overall open space required, because we currently. I mean, that would be, the only change there would be the amount of overall open space required, because we currently do the half and half now. With the twenty percent. If you move it down to ten percent, then you're looking at half natural, half usable, basically is what you're looking at as a minimum. That, that's the only thing that changes at that point, is just the amount.
Then the half, the half that's not usable, then jumps back to Craig's thought that, well, that could be your sinkhole, that could be your outcropping. That you, it'd be impossible to put a house on, right?
It could be. Possibly.
It's ain't easy.
If you go with the, with the ten percent usable, we're gonna get the good stuff. You're gonna get the sinkhole, that's gonna put you back up to twelve, thirteen, fourteen percent. They're gonna give you the, they're gonna give you the sinkhole.
Yeah.
Unless they put it on.
Well, and then, and like Todd was saying, if you were fortunate enough to have a stream where you, it's required a buffer then. I mean, he's maybe giving up twenty or twenty-five percent, just cause.
Cause the stream.
And if you have a development that, I mean, doesn't really have any natural features, I mean, I don't think the regulations necessarily say that. It all can't be usable open space to begin with. Uh, if you have a development and, like I said, there's no natural features. And they're required to do ten percent, but half and half, I mean, it, it's a, you're basically saying you have to have this much open space, half of which has to be this kind. I don't necessarily think that precludes you from making it all usable open space. I think you could do the whole ten percent as open space and, as usable open space in that situation. If there's no streams, if there's no sinkhole, if he has a decent piece of property and there's nothing that really needs to be conserved, quote unquote, I think you could make it all usable. And not, and still meet the regulation.
So do we need to say that in here somewhere? Because?
We could probably clarify, cause yeah, it doesn't actually come right out and say that, but we could clarify that.
If I'm, if I'm trying to think of why we even have planned developments, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that it's. It's to make it more attractive for the people who want to live in that controlled environment within that planned development. And, yeah, I foresee like that usable space for block parties, you know, they'll put up a tent and they'll bring their grills down. And they'll do those kinds of things holidays and two or three times a year. And that's what I envision that open space being used for as much as anything else. Or some kids going down and having a touch football game or something like that at some point in time. And, and that to me is usable space. And, and you want it to be something that is going to be. Attractive enough to where that community grows and the number of kids are growing that, 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 that they'll be able to utilize. Those for just spaces that kids need to do certain things with. So, I, I don't know if I've got a, a, a good number running around in my mind. But ti- ten percent for to walk your dog and to, and to do some other things with, uh, you know, just block parties. That, it, to me is, is not, i- is, the usable space to me is, is reasonable. It's reasonable. I, I, and I think if you wanted to live in there, that would be something that, that you'd say, you know, that ten percent is reasonable. Uh, it, it'll provide us what we need now and twenty years from now. Uh, so I, I'm not, I'm just not real sure that, that I'd wanna go less than that. And I'm just thinking if I were a resident, what would I really want and what would be best for me and, and my family? Cause those, a lot of times those planned developments are not gonna be just houses. They could be some townhomes. Zero lot homes, some that are really pretty close together and that won't have big yards or those type of things. You can't go and throw a ball in your, in your front yard. It's just not big enough to do that. So I, I'm, I'm just thinking, uh, you know, the twenty percent, I was kind of okay with that, but, um, uh, if, if we need to make better use of that land. Then I, I would hate to go less than ten percent of usable space. At, at least me personally.
Well, and, and Rhonda made a comment that made me relook at this handout. If you look at the four. Developments in front of us, if you look at the percentage of open space, based on the twenty. Now you're, you got a lot of acres. And even if you cut that in half, you got a lot of acres to walk your dog.
That's the reason I'm saying I think the, the twenty percent would be, uh, m- m- maybe in some people's minds too much.
Yeah.
But it's ten percent too much, and I, I, I just don't think that it is.
Yeah, but you're saying ten percent usable for those activities, where, which is what we have right now, because half of the twenty percent, the other ten percent. Would be basically for conservation design, protecting natural features and, you know, making, leaving some of that land undisturbed. And which is, we heard that a lot in the community meetings, we were doing the comprehensive plan, that was a lot of the feedback you got. People want to preserve those rural characters of Rutherford County, but they don't necessarily wanna own them, or not in a position to own them. So, um, so that's, that's where I struggle with is figuring out, do they need that full fifty percent of that property that's set aside? For the active use, or, you know, do we wanna make, do we word it somehow that there is some flexibility for a good design? Maybe you have the ten percent set aside, but we don't have, we don't go ahead and decide, no, it's half used this way and half used that way. I don't know. But I don't know that we've ever really cleared up where the sinkholes belong, or where the bluffs belong, and are they getting credit for those or not getting credit for those? I, I don't, I don't know.
What if there were a small planned development? It was, I don't know what's a small planned development, maybe one of these would be, but.
Well, in this case, it's about a hundred and fifty acres is the smallest one.
What if there were, what if there were a small one of, of a hundred acres? You know, I, you, you'd think that ten percent might be okay.
Yeah.
But, but what if there were one that was six hundred acres and, uh, ten percent might be too much?
Yeah.
So if you had the guidelines of ten percent and someone came in and said, we're gonna use this as open space. We would have the opportunity to, to, to say that that's okay, wouldn't we? And it's, they came in at seven and a half percent, wouldn't we say that that's okay?
Well, and I think that, I mean, that goes back to, you know, the discussion at the very beginning that we had, you know, do you wanna see? Do you wanna have the ability just to decide on a case by case basis, as opposed to an actual minimum? Now, of course, that starts getting into the possibility of subjectivity. As far as what constitutes enough on this development versus what constitutes enough on another. But if that's the, if that's something you want to do, I mean, it won't be hard to change the ordinance to take that out, so.
Yeah, but sometimes we're, well, I'm, I'm, I don't know if I wanna go there, but sometimes. Sh- sh- shouldn't we have the opportunity to make a decision? Shouldn't, instead of everything just being so black and white, if, if you've got a six hundred acre development versus a hundred acre development. You may wanna be able to make a decision and say, yeah, uh, you know, seven percent or six percent is enough for that, for that development.
But don't you wanna first depend on policy and law rather than the goodwill of folk?
That's the reason I'm saying the ten percent is to me a pretty good guideline. But, but if you had a huge one, a, a, a big one. And it was gonna be developed over a number of years and not just immediately, you know, you could have some idea of where that's going to be. Developed over a period of time. And, and, you know, I, I don't think they just, just try to throw something together as far as these planned developments. I think that they're pretty well thought out.
They gotta sell them.
Yeah, and it, and it gives, it gives us, uh, good guidelines to take a look and say, we like that. Um, and, and. Do you need sixty acres set aside in a six hundred, in a six hundred, do you need that?
Apply for an exemption? If, if it's set at ten percent, if they're set at a number.
If, i- if you're going with a planned development, I don't necessarily know if there's an exemption at that point.
But is there some language that allows us some flexibility?
Now, that might be an option to look into, you know, and, and, I mean, right now, I don't know how we'd word it exactly. I've, I've got a couple of thoughts floating through my head. But nothing that I'm, that'd be comfortable throwing out there just cause I haven't had time to refine it yet, but, uh. It, it might be possible. And, and if we're going down that route, what might. What might make more sense is really just to take off the minimum and just put some standards there. These are the things we're gonna look at as far as open space is required. Adequate open space. I don't know how about, we go about doing that, but I don't know if you can have the best of both worlds, if you can have a minimum and then have flexibility. After that, I don't know if there's a way to really marry the two.
And does all of our language around PUDs exist in the zoning, or would any of it exist in the subdivision rigs?
It's all in the zoning.
Okay, so we have to decide it now.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously subdivision plat will have to be looked at ba- based on the sub rigs, but, uh, most of the. Most of the information that you'd be looking at would be on the zoning end, because that, you would, before you ever saw a plat, you'd be approving the development itself.
Okay.
So as a separate zone, so.
So, well, Todd and Doug, is the rule of thumb that if you have a step system, it's about twenty percent of your property? It takes about twenty percent?
I think a lot of it depends on soil.
That's what I was saying. It all really depends on soils and, and what they, I don't think there is a hard and fast number. At least I have not heard. And, and I know they're currently even trying now to, some of the earlier step systems that were approved. Are going back and being able to add more lots, because they're changing the rules on what soils, how many lots they can put on a, on, on the soils. Uh, they were kinda conservative in the first, uh, when they first approved them, but they're able to get more, they're, find out through how they've been tested. Uh, that they can actually have a bigger capacity, but I have not heard a, a number.
Yeah, I think we just, we've just been using twenty acres just for simplicity of calculations, really is all we've been doing before, so.
If, if I was a developer and came up here and not knowing what the will of this route might be. If I presented a plan up here, I'd be nervous to come in and say, I'm gonna give you eight and a half percent. Yeah, get up here, we don't like that. We like sixteen percent. But if I had the ten percent, it's a lot, a lot of money goes into that and come up here and. Get shot out on it.
And, and I understand where the development community comes from as far as planned developments and saying that each tract is, is unique. You know, even, even if you take a piece of property that are the same acreage, they're gonna have different characteristics. Which may, uh, make open space easier on one versus another. I, I mean, there, there's a lot of factors that go into it. So, I mean, I understand where they're coming from at the same time, so.
Todd and, um, after I asked my question, I remembered that, that we did have a little piece of information. If you'll recall many months ago, when we first started to chat about this, uh, Mr. Markley with SEC gave a scenario. On six different subdivisions that they have developed, and they gave a number of lots and then the step system area. And if you do the math, it ranges anywhere from fifteen to thirty percent of the property was needed for step. So let's be, let's say fifteen, alright? If, if you take Jeff's mega side of six hundred acres, what is that?
That's seven hundred and, I mean, seventy-five acres.
Yeah.
Right? Seventy-five acres that is just, that you're gonna be living by, that is unus- we'll quote, call it unusable. It could be green and pretty, right? And it will have to have a fence around it per CUD. But it's, it's open green space. And then take seventy-five acres and then. We take ten, or we ask ten percent of that. Man, that's a lot. It, it is. That's, that's, that's what I was worried about earlier. If you have a, a large site like that, are you going to require? Really ten percent when it might not be needed?
Right, and the cities, of course, I know Murfreesboro, as far as I know, they don't have a minimum requirement. Is that right, Mr. Lewis, for open space?
No.
And.
That's the negotiating part.
Right, and of course, they're in a better position as far as, you know, having the sanitary sewer available. Where they don't have the issue with the step systems that we run into a lot. Uh, so, I mean, there's, again, I mean, there's, there's good points on both sides of this.
Yes, there is.
There really is.
And, and one other thing too, I mean, you start having six hundred acres open, or sixty acres open space, that has to be maintained by the homeowner association. Now, with the plan unit develop, plan unit development, we do have better rapport with homeowner associations. But in the past, some of those are kinda questionable, they get established, and then they would be the ones maintaining that sixty, sixty-five acres. Now that's, that's their responsibility and we can go back on them, but that's also something to, also to kinda keep in mind that they will be.
Monthly homeowners dues may go from a hundred and fifty to nine hundred dollars a month to be able to maintain fifty acres. Well, good, I mean, yeah, that's crazy. If I had six hundred acres, I'd build a quarry too, by the way.
You know, I, I can understand where in the city it'd be negotiable to the fact that you have a sewer system there, you're not dealing with these other things we're dealing out here. But I'd hate to know that if I'm a developer out here and I'm planning this development. Based on what I'm gonna think up here, when you bring this plan up here, and I'm gonna sit here and say. Cause I don't know what I'm gonna think tomorrow, uh, when it comes down to some of these things like that. And, uh, you know, whenever you're planning something, it's. You know, I like some positives. It looks like to me you almost have to have a minimum of, of something set there for you to shoot at and work at. And, and just, uh, a- and then if it comes to the point where you can make these changes here, I can see that. But if you don't put a minimum in there somehow, I, I just don't see how it works, because, uh, I hate to know. I'd have to come out here and plan something and spend all that money in planning with an engineer and whatever, based on the fact of what Craig Lynch thinks over here. And then, and then when I get here, uh, what I thought he was thinking, he wasn't thinking. And then here we gotta go back again to the drawing board, and every time I go to the drawing board, there's what, a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour we gotta work with again. Uh, I think the idea of, of the whole deal about this is we want more of these developments. Uh, because of what they do and how they help the county and how they help our communities. And I think the, the simplification that we can do it out here. As far as doing this, is what we need to negotiate with as far as the, the builders, the developers and all of this. And the simpler we can make it, the better it's gonna be. But it's just hard for me to grasp around just, uh. A figure out here and, and whatever, especially with you here in the office, trying to negotiate that too. But, you know, I think, you know, if we can come into some kind of agreement here with, with a set minimum, at least work that way and then, then negotiate.
Alright, then if we come up with a minimum and let's say ten percent. I think Doug made the argument that if it's ten percent usable, we really haven't made a change, cause we were doing twenty and asking for ten and ten. If we're saying ten's a minimum, do we ask for five and five?
That's possible.
I mean, I mean.
Is that the part we leave up to?
Yeah, I mean, at that point, you just wanna say, it has to be ten percent open space, we're not gonna define what it is usable versus nonusable. And just whatever you get, you get, you know, I, I mean, I just, I mean, that's an option as well. Just not say you have to have ten percent usable. Open space and then kinda go back to Ms. Allen, what you were talking about as far as do sinkholes count in that? And, I mean, obviously, we just don't want, like you say, the, the. The leftover, the leftover waste of the, of the subdivision, oh, I can't do anything with that, that'll be open space, you know, we don't wanna see that. But, I mean, maybe work on that end of it, as opposed to what can and what does and does not count as open space.
Some standpoint, we do wanna see some of that.
Right.
Because we don't want some of those features disturbed. But it's not, but it doesn't make it beneficial necessarily for those residents.
Right.
Alright, well, I'm just talking out loud. What if it just says five percent, a minimum of five percent usable space? And not have a cap on the unusable space? Does that accomplish anything? Or is that just saying the same thing in a different way?
I think it's the same thing in a different way.
Yeah, I mean, you're as bad, at that point, all you're saying is you need a minimum of five percent usable open space.
Right.
And then, so whatever they have for natural areas just doesn't count as open space, basically is, is what I get.
Okay.
I mean, you're not, yeah, if you change it, if you just go to ten percent, that, that's basically the same.
If we just say ten percent and not put a, tell you what the ten percent is, why wouldn't I just give you ten percent of the junk land I can't build on anyway?
Well, yeah, right, I mean.
Sorry, you don't get a walking trail and sorry, you don't get a place to play ball.
That's, I, I mean, and again, I think a lot of it'll go back to what counts as open space and what doesn't count as open space. You know, at that point, do we even define what quote unquote usable open space is? Do we just say these things count as open space, these things don't? And that way, I mean. I mean, just throwing it out there.
Here's my conundrum. I'm ready to, I'm ready to at least throw the twenty percent requirement out now. Ten percent is the number I like. But I need some help from, to even make a motion on how we're gonna define the ten percent.
Usable.
Well, then what's the difference?
Yeah, well, I, I guess, maybe.
If you get ten percent usable, you, are you, we're twenty, we're twenty right now, okay?
We're twenty with ten and ten.
Okay, so if it's, that's, that's twenty percent that they gotta dedicate, right?
Right.
Okay, we'll drop it down to ten. I don't see how that's the same. That's not the same. You could have, you ten percent usable. You got ten percent there, they don't have to, granted, they probably will give us some more that they don't want.
Right.
But with ten percent.
Okay.
If we start off like Craig is suggesting there, two years from now, we may want to change that. It'd be easier to reduce that than it would be to take it up, because we've seen we've made a mistake.
Yeah.
Don't you think?
You know, at, at this point, um, I mean, I think we have a direction as to where the planning commission wants to go, and plus we have a few things that have been asked. that we want to look into a little more. Um, now that we, I, I think we can all agree, at least at this point, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we can all agree that there seems to be a consensus, as I'm hearing it, that the twenty percent is probably too high and that we need to reduce that. Okay. It looks like ten percent is kind of the magic number at this point. However, we're still having some trouble figuring out how we want to define that ten percent. Is it usable, nonusable? How do we want to, what counts as usable, what isn't counted as usable? Let us go back and take a look at that.
In lieu of a motion from me now, let's just, you want to massage
Yeah, yes, sir.
the wording a little bit and come back and we'll, we'll take another pass.
Yeah, and we'll take another stab at it, and we'll, we'll try to present to you a couple of options as far as, maybe looking at, you know, what counts as usable open space, what, what, how it's defined, looking at the actual definitions at that point.
Would you also please check with C U D and see if, if there is a fencing
Yeah.
requirement.
Yep, got it, got it down.
It'd be good, Doug, and I don't know how much work it would create, but to take maybe even some of these existing examples that you used and see what maybe it might look like, um, just on a piece of paper as to what that twenty percent looked like. And, and we could also visualize maybe what a ten percent might look like on something. And it could be just out of a book that you has, you guys have.
We'll see where we go. We might.
And let me ask one more question, I'm sorry. Todd, if you had a, let's, let's say you had a perfectly rectangular two hundred acres. Y- your step system has to be located somewhere where the soils are adequate, right? It could be right in the middle, and you buil-, and you build townhouses around it, or it could be stuck in a corner somewhere, right?
Correct.
We really don't know.
No, because like, for instance, colonial states, I don't know if you're that last section, it's all the way back in the very back of the property and they're building back to it. So, I mean, it can, now, the thing with that is the step system has to go in on the first section. So, that is something to keep in mind. The step system has to be going in. If it's away in the back, there has to be an access to it. So, that has to be in place. So they could build it back in the back and build a road back there, and, and it may be fifteen years before actually a house gets back there to where they actually see that open space. Uh, but that cost is upfront for them to build access to it, but that, that can be done. Typically, they don't do that because that developer don't want to go to that space, but colonial states is a prime example of, of building the step system way in the back and building away from it.
Step system is engineered for the whole project.
Correct.
I think Farmington out in Las Casas is probably a really good example, because it's in a corner right now, and we're looking at expanding around that now, so it will go from a corner to somewhere else in that development. And that's a beautiful development out there too, so, uh, it may be in a corner without any houses on maybe even at least two sides of it. And it, in the near future, over the next few years, it'll, that'll, that'll change to where there'll be houses around it.
Barrett Ridge is the other, Barrett Ridge is the opposite Barrett Ridge and kind of Royal Glen, they're both in the front. When you go in, you see those Barrett Ridges along, uh, it's in the front and all the homes are in the back, so you kind of have that. When you're driving by, you really don't see the homes back there because of the, the step system.
So aesthetically, it's a pleasant entry into the, okay.
Hey Doug, will you include, um, what Todd said about the stormwater regs, how that's gonna be impacting open space in the future? Just make sure you fold that, that into your recommendation somehow. Because that may play into the whole usable, developable, because I, I still feel like we're talking about two different things. We're talking about developable land and then land, once it's set aside, is it usable or just open space? And I feel like we're kind of mixing our verbiage a little bit.
Right, detention pond wouldn't be usable.
But it could be open.
But, 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 well, yeah, I mean, it's, it could be, it could be such that it's a good-looking pond.
Yeah.
Like I said, we actually, there are some guidelines in our P U D regs for detention or retention ponds that can be used as open space, provided they meet certain criteria.
Well, and Todd knows this, the, the EPA and TDEC are, are pushing for more green development. And he's exactly right. You have, you will have to maintain the first one inch of rainfall on your site, period. You, you cannot drain it to your neighbor. You have to let it percolate, you have to put it in a pond, and that requires open land. There, there's no way around that.
No.
And so they're, they're, as much as I hate government, they're actually gonna, in this case, help these P U Ds to even more green and aesthetically pleasing than before, because they're gonna have to have more green area to be able to treat the rainwater.
But what we're talking about now is going to look different to a planning commission fifteen years from now. Simply because of some of the regulations that you just mentioned, Todd, about changing in the very near future. So, so the ten percent may not be realistic ten years from now.
Yeah.
So, we could, or a future planning commission could adjust that in a downward way, and it would be difficult to do it the other way. It would, in my mind, it would be difficult to do it the, the other way. Let me, just one quick question. On all of our planned developments, after they're built, the roads are built, they become county roads?
Yes. Well, generally, yeah. There, there may be some that have private roads. I mean, that, that, that is an option in there, but generally speaking, they, they have that ability to be county roads.
They have to be built to county standards. That is one, that is one thing we did change. They have to be built to county standards, even if they are a private road.
And then the county takes over the maintenance of those roads, just like any other development. I, I couldn't remember that, so, thank you. We, we've spent two and a half hours together.
It was a good two and a half hours.
I agree, and I've said that several times, Mike, and this was another good session. Although we didn't come away with any decisions, just give the staff some, some other things to do. So we'll just come back in a couple of weeks and, and, and with some wording.
Yes, sir.
Some additional wording, and we'll discuss that further, okay?
Can anybody tell me when the next meeting is?
It is, uh, April, I'm sorry, June the eleventh at six P M.
That sounds right, yes, sir.
Monday, June the eleventh.
And we do have, I think, four public hearings. Yeah, we'll have four public hearings, uh, on the, on the docket next month for rezonings, so.
June eleventh, six P M.
It should be an interesting meeting.
Interesting is what we are all about. Anything else? We don't need a motion, we're adjourned.